Watertown City Council Work Session for Monday, December 4th, 2017. The first item on the agenda is the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, JDAI, presentation by Cottington County Commissioner Lee Gable and Judge Carmen Means. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor, for letting us come and talk to you. Been talking a lot about city-county cooperation, so this is an opportunity. And I think we're gonna see some other things coming down the pike. But this is one thing that's already starting in the works right now. I'm kind of a messenger. The slides I'm gonna show you are from the Unified Judicial Systems slides. They weren't slides that I made up myself, but essentially, JDAI, Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, if you look at this slide, take a look at that center square right there where it says "The Purpose." Whenever you have an offender, the risk is, when you decide whether or not you're gonna detain somebody, the risk is, is there a risk to public safety, or is there a risk that they're gonna show up for their court date? And so, the same thing obviously applies to juvenile offenders. And so, the goal of JDAI is to find ways to minimize detention, from the way it sounds, detention alternatives, while still doing the, addressing the issues of public safety and reducing the danger that somebody wouldn't appear in court or for their court proceedings. And so, and the idea there, just so people know, juvenile, the juvenile population is not a big problem for our jail, so that's not really the issue. We have a population overall as a problem, but the juvenile population is not a big problem for our county jail. However, if we look at the top square there, this top rectangle where it says, talks about vision, the idea is that we don't want juvenile offenders to become adult offenders someday. So, this is really kind of a long-term vision in terms of the conversation the county's been having about the jail, but it's something, it's the right thing to do. And where this came from, a bit of the history is that South Dakota as a state had one of the highest juvenile detent, juvenile jail populations in the country. And so, at a national level, some people that cared about this, it's called the JDAI, the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, approached the state and started addressing it. And so, we saw some laws come down, Senate Bill 73 from a couple of years ago, as well as a Supreme Court ruling, that kind of directed what counties and law enforcement and jails do with juvenile offenders. And so, the premise that, again, this isn't my slide, but the premise basically is that if you, if you put a juvenile offender in jail, you detain them, you increase the chances that they're likely to continue to commit crimes. And so, the light colored bars there just simply show the higher percentages. If you incarcerate a juvenile offender, and the darker color just shows the likelihood if you don't incarcerate. If you find something else that you can avoid, to avoid that detaining or incarcerating, something else you can do. And so, the goal of JDAI is to figure out some of those other things that we might do as a community. And this kind of says the same thing as the last slide, but from a different perspective, just keeping in mind that as, when we're young, we do things that are a bit more foolish, but that doesn't mean we're gonna adopt a life of crime. And so, that's basically what that slide's saying. So, even if you, if you got arrested as a juvenile, or if you knew you did something that was a criminal offense, the likelihood that you became a criminal for life is pretty low. So, just chiming in, Judge. And this is, and again, I'm kind of a novice, I'm a layman, telling you these things that I've learned over the past few months about the criminal justice system and juveniles involved in it. This slide just simply shows the process, so the youth behavior, if somebody does something foolish that's criminal, have contact with law enforcement, and then, now what? So, the choice is to detain, obviously, or to find something else, release, detain, or something in between. And take, if you notice this abbreviation, RAI, that stands for Risk Assessment, Risk Instrument. So, it's basically a questionnaire, is how I think of it. And what that looks like is that. But now, just, the jails around the state are having, when somebody arrests a juvenile, the jails and the law enforcement around the state are having to apply this, and this was the result of a Supreme Court ruling, directing that counties, that where the jails detain youth, or authorized to detain youth, have to apply this risk assessment instrument. And what it essentially means is that, here's, the way I understand it from a layman's perspective, is that if a juvenile offender doesn't do anything, something really bad, and it's really bad, you don't detain them. So, that means you need to find an alternative. And so, that's kind of, that's been basically directed to counties, and so, the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative is something that the UJS is helping us through as counties, and as communities, really, so that we can come up with solutions that are alternative to detention, since we're not supposed to be detaining juveniles in general, or avoiding it as much as we can. Okay, just to give you some statistics of what it looks like in Cottington County, these are statistics that UJS, the Unified Judicial System, put together from the past two years, so from July 15th to July 17th. And you can see, mostly the arrests come from Watertown, that's understandable, because Watertown is the city in the county. But it points to the fact that this has to be really a community effort. The county is simply kind of the coordinator of it, because we're responsible for the jail, and we support the court system. And so, it's really a partnership, I guess, kind of coordinating it between the UJS and the county, but really, it's community involvement. And then, just to give you an idea of what kinds of offenses, in case you're wondering, you can take a look at those. If you want to comment on anything you see there.
Well, just, so, the ray that he's talking about is a standardized instrument that intake centers can ascertain information about the juvenile. Are they on probation for something else? Do they have multiple pending files? What is the offense that they're being brought in on? Is that, would that be a felony in adult court? Would that be a misdemeanor? And each of those things gets a numerical score. And then, when you add up those scores as part of this instrument, the instrument itself tells you what you should do. And so, if the score is a low score, they should be released to their parents. If the score is a medium score, you might want to look at alternatives. And that's kind of what JDAI is gonna be about, and what we're gonna be working on. And then, for very high scores, you place them in secure detention. And so, JDAI isn't against detaining juveniles, it's against unnecessarily detaining juveniles, because we do find that detaining them when we don't need to actually does harm to them in the long run.
So, this is, the results that Judge Means just, or the RAI that Judge Means just spoke of, this is the data, the resultant data from two years' worth of those applying that risk assessment instrument. And you can see the majority of folks, of juveniles, just as indicated by the score on the risk assessment instrument, should be released. And then, you can see the numbers there, 23 for something in between, and then 22 detained. But what really happens, because of the lack of alternatives right now, is, that's what actually has happened over the past two years. And so, just to give you an idea, that, those two slides kind of show the need for those alternatives, and that's exactly what JDAI is trying to address. Some of the, some of the things you might be wondering, like, what are you talking about? Either you can release them, or you can put them in jail. Well, there's some choices in between. You probably know about the Boys and Girls Club Teen Court that operates, and so, that's one thing that could get integrated into this, but also, there's other things happening in the community, other things available from different nonprofit organizations, and things that we just kind of need to map out. So, and that leads us to what, and what I talked to you about, Mayor, was a memorandum of understanding with the city, the county, the court system, and many other agencies within the community, so that we can get together and, if I could... Could you project that PDF, the PDF file?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, so, what we're working on now is a memorandum of understanding, so that we can work as a committee. We've begun meeting informally with all the entities that you can see up there in that first paragraph. And right now, we're in draft, so the purpose of this discussion is simply to get you familiar with the issue, so you understand that we're talking about it. We, as a county, have not formally approved this memorandum yet, but it's a, it's a pretty straightforward thing. But the goal would be that we get together, we apply these principles, we map out all the community resources. So, the obvious, in addition to the city, the county, the court system that would need to be involved, obviously, the police department, sheriff, jail, and some of the agencies that might be providing alternatives, like HSA, LSS, the school, the Boys and Girls Club. And any, and over time, I think we'll probably uncover some more nonprofit agencies that seek to help juveniles that might be having, having trouble. So, with that, I'd like to answer any questions, or attempt to, anyway, so.
Thank you. So, really, the memorandum, could you summarize the memorandum of understanding?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, just going down the memorandum itself, so the parties, just simply, obviously, who is involved. The purpose is essentially that first slide, so the idea being, we want to find alternatives so that we can avoid unnecessary detention while minimizing the risk to public safety and minimizing the risk that a juvenile offender is gonna avoid their court proceedings, or minimizing the failure to appear. The authority that the committee would have would essentially be to coordinate solutions, map out solutions, and when you have to ask, say, a parent agency for money, well, then it would just be an advisory or recommending role. And then, we keep it, okay. So, every, just the memorandum is amendable, you know, keep it going as long as we need to. I would imagine this would go on indefinitely. The strategies, basically, the idea there is simply to collaborate as much as you can, map out all the things that we have, figure out a system within the community where we can provide alternatives for juvenile offenders, use a lot of data. And by the way, one of the nice things about this, with UJS kind of pushing communities to do this, is that we get a consultant. The state has a consultant, they have, her name is Angie Collingdon, she couldn't be here tonight, she's, she's in another community, but she's, she's based here in Watertown, so that's kind of convenient for us. But she can help us with all the studies and the data gathering and assembling that as we go through it. And then, that third bullet down, making use of objective instruments, so the risk assessment instrument to guide detention decisions, so make it as objective as possible. And then, establishing that community continuum of non-secured detention alternatives, so alternatives to putting somebody in jail, so that's that one right there. I think that kind of summarizes it.
This isn't...
And working on, working on a lot of process.
It's not a financial...
No.
...compensating document, but that...
I suppose at some point, that could, that could be a recommendation that comes out of it, but that would be a separate thing. This is simply agreeing to apply our brains collectively as a community to this effort, so to be on a committee, basically.
So, you would be asking for the city council to...
To let you, to have you sign it, yeah. And then, the other thing is, we've already, informally, we've had the school resource officers from the police department have been taking part in the meetings, so Chief McPeek's been very supportive of this effort. So, right now, it's kind of putting our heads together, figuring out solutions. I think we can probably do this, especially since we're getting a lot of the consulting from the state, you know, it's kind of part of the program that UJS is funding right now. There may be, there may be a time when some study, you know, we see something that we need to study more that's beyond that capability, that maybe we need to think about, but for the time being, I think this is mostly just getting together as a community and working through some, some problems. The, it's, since, from the county perspective, since the juvenile population at the jail is not a big deal right now for us compared to the population overall, that I'm not, I think that just simply getting together as a community will get us a long way in dealing with the problem, so.
Great thing about JDAI is it's not really, we're not here asking for money, what we're asking is for a commitment that we can all work together to look into resources that already exist and might be able to be adapted, so that we can have alternatives to detention that are available to our youth, so.
Relative to the resource or the finances, has there been some analysis done, maybe we don't have a large enough population locally, but across the state? I mean, what's a cost, the estimated cost of something like this versus incarceration? I mean, has there been some attempt to analyze, you know, what the benefits of this program would be financially?
I think, I think the answer from somebody that works, you know, kind of, one of the people that's working in this area, would be, number one, it's the right thing to do, you know, you want to avoid creating adult offenders from juvenile offenders. And generally speaking, incarceration, particularly juvenile incarceration, is pretty expensive. So, that's upwards, it's over $200 a day. Some, the counties like Minnehaha and Pennington that have a more full-up, we have the ability to house juveniles in our facility, but if we, if we weren't able to do that, and some counties have to send, many counties have to send their juvenile offenders away, and usually, that's Minnehaha or Pennington, and I think the cost is somewhere around $250, it's in that area per day, so.
Well, I can tell you, there's two pilot sites that have already been working on JDAI for a number of years, Minnehaha and Pennington County. And for those counties, they have been able to close off entire wings of their detention center, because they've seen the populations decrease and the numbers decrease. So, in a place like that, you can then reallocate those resources to alternatives. We may not be that, I guess, cursed or blessed, depending on how you look at it, but the fact of the matter is, we also then won't have to spend, spend a lot, or find a lot of resources, because we're really only talking about 22 to 23 youth for a period of a year. So, we don't have to come up with huge resources, we just have to come up with some alternatives, and that's what we're working on.
And the other thing, from, from my perspective, is, you know, I've been working on the facility quite a bit, in the long run, if we, if we can avoid creating adult offenders, then that's, that's a savings in the long run, so, even if it's a little bit, so.
Any other questions or comments?
So, so, Mayor, if that's, okay, we'll probably come back to you in, within a month or so with asking you to approve this. We're gonna do the same in the county, as well as some of the other agencies that are at the bottom of that memorandum. And then, just, just to kind of put a bug in your ear, we have a similar effort going on in the mental health, mental illness in the jail, that you've probably heard about. That's been a working group that's been going on for over a year, but very informally, so adding some structure to it, we're probably looking at an MOU or a charter for that as well. And the police department's been involved with that, so that's been the city representation on that one. But that's just a bug in your ear right now, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, the next item on the agenda is temporary signs as free speech presentation by First District Association of Local Governments. And I see Luke Muller's here. I knew there was a court case out there where a city was sued and lost for doing something similar to what we're thinking about doing here. And so, I asked Luke if he would give this presentation, actually, didn't realize that it was the Supreme Court of the United States. So, the precedent has been set by the Supreme Court, and we should pay close attention to what this could mean for Watertown's future. Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for, chance to come in and speak to you. As said, Luke Muller here with First District Association of Governments. You can see I wear a few hats out of that office, but one of them I don't wear is that of an attorney. I'm not an attorney, I'm not here to give you any legal advice, don't take it that way. What I'm doing is giving you information that's based off of, through trade magazines, as well as Planners Association, as, which I'm the president of the South Dakota Planners Association. I've given presentations based on my own understanding of this, which has been gleaned from other attorneys, as well as, this is a combination of my presentation, as well as one from the past president of the South Dakota Planners Association, immediately outgoing. She gave the presentation along with Sioux Falls's city planner at the Municipal League Conference this year as well. So, it's a combination of those items. Really going to focus on the idea with temporary signs, because that is the portion of that decision that was really settled, case law, there's a little bit more open that I'm not going to spend a lot of time with. But basically, overview that decision as it relates to some of the things that are in front of you today, and then, just kind of try and help you navigate through that as far as some of the maybe best practices, or just ways to look at your ordinance. This really isn't meant to be any sort of a, any sort of a, speaking negative about any type of sign in particular, as long as it's not regulating the content of a, of the signs. Basically, this is going to be about as subtle as a sledgehammer, we're going to go over about the same thing several times here. But, leading up to the decision that was referenced, the, and it was a decision out of Gilbert, Arizona, and we'll talk about it in a little bit, leading up to that, a lot of Supreme Court and federal court decisions, Supreme Courts upheld sign codes largely, especially where they relate to safety. They've even upheld aesthetics, things as far as they look nice and codes as long as that, as long as those aesthetics serve a compelling government interest of some sort. I'll talk about what that means in a little bit. Lower courts have been a little less apt to uphold a code that was heavily based on aesthetics, that's where a lot of those have made their way up to the National Supreme Court. However, courts at all levels do scrutinize any exemptions that are in reference to the sign code. So, the more exemptions you have in your sign code, the weaker it is. That's just generally the way that it's been looked at. And then, finally, content-based regulations, anything that, that is based upon what's on the sign itself makes it very difficult to enforce. What comes into play here is First Amendment via the Fourteenth Amendment, which says that Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom or speech of the press, and so, those have been, what's been cited. Protection of freedom of spe, of speech requires that courts apply a strict test to regulations based on the content. I'm not going to try to explain to you what strict scrutiny means, because frankly, I don't know that I could explain it very well. But the fact of the matter is, is that it's going to be tough to argue, is what I've gathered from the Supreme Court case, unless you can prove a compelling governmental interest, like it's counterproductive to turn into oncoming traffic. So, we've got a narrowly tailored rule that says that we can allow a stop sign at that intersection to keep people from turning out into oncoming traffic. That's a narrowly tailored solution to a compelling government interest. In the case of Gilbert, Arizona, what they had is, they had a sign code, they had 23 different exemptions to their sign code, which seems like a lot, when you, except for when you consider Watertown has 20. So, the fact is, is that it's very similar. The ideologic signs, these are just a couple of them that applied in that case. The ideologic signs reference 20 square feet in all zoning districts. They had political signs, much like this community has, they were separate sizes, depending on the zoning district, and then, they had temporary directional signs. And this is really where the rubber met the road, was the fact that there was a church that would have rotational places for their services, but the regulation said that they could only place signs 12 hours in advance, 12 hours in advance of an event. So, if their church service is at nine o'clock in the morning, imagine how much good it's going to do to put the sign up at nine o'clock at night, directing people to the new location. So, the church said, no, we're gonna put them somewhere else, because we see signs plastered all over town, so we're gonna do the same thing. So, they did. And then, the city went and took them out. And then, they took them to court. And went to a lower-level court, a federal court, ultimately to the Supreme Court, and that's where that comment and that decision of the compelling government interest in aesthetics and traffic and safety, and the Supreme Court said it fails those tests. Their regulations failed those tests, because it depended on who was making, who was advertising on those, that those exemptions were different based on what the message was. So, again, it failed on the compelling government interest, and it failed to regulate narrowly toward the government interest. Two points, they're gonna say the same thing on these next two slides, Judge Clarence Thomas, you can see his quote, "That indicates content-based laws, which are those that target speech based on its communicative content, are presumptively unconstitutional, and may be justified only if the government proves that they are narrowly tailored to serve the compelling state interest." And so, bottom line, the harsh test of government regulation of speech is what it was looked at, and the topic discussed, or the idea of the message about the specific event, really isn't something you can look at. Said in another way, basically, Supreme Court ruled against the city. Ruled that the message itself was subject to, or based on what was being said, or the sign regulation was based on what was being said on the sign. The laws that can't be justified without reference to the content regulated speech, what's that mean? Basically, if you have to read the sign, and I'm gonna say this again, if you have to read the sign to regulate it, it's not gonna meet the subject of scrutiny, is what it, is what they're getting at. So, if I gotta read the sign to be able to tell which of those 20 exemptions it's gonna fall in, it probably isn't gonna meet that. So, the Supreme Court gave an example, and while John Locke was only mildly interesting to me, I can only imagine what it was to some others, as I'm a political geek, but the bottom line is, is that they, they used three examples, and they said that the court, the city of Gilbert had three exemptions within their ordinance, that if someone, someone had anything going on with John Locke, they could, they would be handled differently. If someone was having a book club meeting to discuss one of John Locke's works, they'd have to fall under the, the short timeframe meeting that they were going to have a, they were gonna have a book club meeting at this house on this day, they'd have that 12-hour provision. If they were going to advertise a political candidate that was running under the, under, with a quote, under John Locke's ideals, he would fall under the political sign portion. If there was just something that said, fill in the blank, John Locke said, and put that on, that would also be different, that would be more like a political ideal billboard, kind of like the right-to-life signs. So, again, depending on what was being said, they're regulating it differently. All three'd be treated differently by their ordinance, and for what it's worth, they'd be treated differently by the city of Watertown's ordinance. I know that's not what's being discussed, but it's something you want to keep in mind. So, what can be regulated? It's three things. It's the time, how long they're up, where they're located, and the manner, which means type of materials, how big they are, lighting, are they lit, are they backlit, those sorts of things. Sign codes, as I said, can't regulate based upon content, particularly in the temporary signs. So, our regulations, basically, as I said before, if you've got to read the sign to determine what hole it fits into, then, based on what's been said in other cases, it's likely unconstitutional. In other words, our regulations have to assume that a sign looks like that. It's a blank. We're regulating blank signs. That's the bottom line. So, how do we do that? Well, we all know that we've got political sign exemptions, we've got real estate signs and directional signs, construction signs. You're not the only community that has this. In fact, planners all around the country are trying to grapple with, goodness gracious, what are we gonna do? We've always had these things in here. And some of them were ahead of the curve in adopting content neutral, other ones have been clamoring to catch up, and other ones have just been hoping the heck it doesn't come to their town. And so, basically, what has been recommended out of the, out of the National Planners Association in examples have been, instead of having that political sign exemption, you just flat-out say what you mean, you flat-out say what's, what's allowed. On a property, a sign is allowed so many days before and after an election. As a community, you've got to establish your standards as far as how big they're gonna be, where they're gonna be located. In Watertown, you've already done that. You've got that in your code already, you basically have to take that out as a political sign. At the end of this, I'm gonna explain something, though, that's gonna change that a little bit. With real estate signs, it's the same way. What they do, instead of listing them as real estate signs, is they say that a sign may be put on a property while it's being sold, or while something on the property is being sold. You may have to identify how long that is, but also, the size of the signs, those sorts of things. It's, it's really dealing with the exemption. But notice in here, nowhere in here is it referencing who's advertising, or what it is. The same thing with directional signs, you might treat those like the, the bank signs that say, turn in here, or something like that. Again, treat those as accessory signs, as opposed to saying that they are a directional sign for this business. The same thing with construction signs during a construction project. It's more about during something. You're regulating the time that these can be up, not what it's going to say. But notice, again, as I said, we're not talking about what's on them. Now, if during an election, somebody wants to put a sign on their property that says it's a, there's a garage sale going on, well, knock yourself out. We're not regulating what's on that sign, we're regulating when they can go up. So, yeah, it does open the door for things that are different. But the bottom line is, what the Supreme Court says is that we're really not allowed to regulate it. I'm not gonna play this, this article... we're really not allowed to regulate it. I'm not going to play this, this article that was on the news, but you can look it up if you want. But basically, if you could regulate, if the city of Sioux Falls felt as if they could regulate the content of signs, I assume they would take the sign down or order it removed with these, with these letters on it. It was, it's pretty clear what the intent was, especially when you hear the backstory of this. But basically, if the sign literally is not vulgar, showing something, and it's basically going to have to go to a nuisance to take it down. And that's really been their interpretation. And I use this again, this comes out of a slide out of the Sioux Falls presentation. That was their example. And Shauna sends her regards from there. So where are we at? I know I spent a lot of time just talking temporary signs in general. I know you got an issue before you tonight. I just kind of want to give you a little bit of direction on that, how this relates a little bit. You got to determine where you're okay with signs. And that, and you've done this as a community, obviously, to a large degree. First of all, identify why you're regulating where the signs are. Is it for safety? Is it for aesthetics? Is it for both? Maybe it's a combination somehow. Figure that part out. Then you're going to determine whether the timing, size, or other factors affect that. You know, how long is it there? Is it a big deal if it's only there a couple of days versus if it's there forever? How big is it? Does it matter how tall it is? How far back from the curb is it? How far back into the property is it? Those things. If you are allowing, and specifically if we're talking about the right-of-way, if you're, you are allowing signs in the right-of-way, the ordinance is only allowed, from my understanding of the Supreme Court case, to address the time and the placement and the manner. And so anything that's going to restrict the, the language is, or who is making the messages is going to be something that's going to be a problem. You know, if you do allow signs in the, on public property or in the right-of-way, I know that I had forwarded on to me a letter that was sent from a, a law firm out east that apparently has been watching numerous communities in what they adopt for sign codes and just, it appears waiting for an opportunity to check them out. But they did give recommendation for some language and it's, it's not bad. I mean, in the end, the suggestion that they've got is the same. Indicate where you're okay with the signs that you would allow in a right-of-way, how big they would be, and a manner in which you're going to permit them, or maybe you don't even permit them at all. But basically what they're getting at is allow signs, don't allow signs, don't regulate what they say, what portion of it. And so the bottom line is, from a standpoint of recommendations that I'd come through that feel comfortable about, is it, with any ordinance that's going to regulate signs differently based upon the message, they need to be denied or taken out of your ordinance.
Luke, I got a question before we go too far.
Sure.
When we talk about regulating the time,
Mm-hmm.
is it a one-size-fits-all? That means that any temporary sign would, they would all qualify for X days? Or can you do it by sign type? Real estate sign different than a political sign, then different than a rummage sale sign?
Well, let's go back to the one slide I had there. There's a headache to it, but the answer is you could do them separately, but you're going to want to take out the terminology of the political sign, the real estate sign, the directional sign, and on a property, and let's just use a residential district, okay? On a property in a residential district, during election season, I could have, I could be building a project on my property. I could be making an addition onto my house. I could also be selling my house and I could be advertising for a candidate. Honestly, today, you could do that. But what you would do in here is, I, I know it doesn't do any good for me to cover a portion on my screen, but the point is, in here, you would have that same ability. You'd just spell out the instances in which you're allowing them. So it's really the same as what you said. Bottom line is, yes, you can spell out differently when they're having them, but it's based more on the thing that's going on, on the property. Does that make sense? There's a campaign going on, so we do that. There's a-
Right. So real estate sign, we could have terminology, time and end specifically for any real estate signs. We could have a different one for rummage sale signs.
You could, but again, it's going, it's not going to be for the sale of the property. When the property is for sale, it's not going to limit them to, they're going to be allowed, let's say you're going to allow one sign on the property when you're, when you're selling it, okay? If they choose, I don't know why they'd do this, but if someone would choose that, you know what, instead of having a real estate sign in my yard while I'm selling my house, I'm going to put a sign up that, that talks about, the street is in bad condition, they could do that. It wouldn't have anything to do with that. I don't know why they'd do it, but someone could do that. So it wouldn't have anything to do with, it wouldn't have to have anything to do with what's happening on the property. It would just have to do with, this is a time I get to have another sign, is what that would be.
So you can't set a time for each individual type of signage?
Not if you've got to read the sign to figure out which time it is.
What if I can't read?
Then. Then just looking at the pictures.
And reading what I'm saying, that, that is, that's important. Is it, you know, for us to start looking at different segments and say, we'll do this for this one, this for this. What you're saying is, we really can't do that.
You have to assume that the sign looks like, looks like that blank screen I showed you. And not being able to read it. I mean, bottom line is, you're regulating it based on this sign, based on this sign that's on the wall here. Where, where that sign is, when it's put up, and what sort of materials go up there. Obviously, you know what type of sign this is, but you get my point. Is it, you could have a blank sign. You're basically regulating a blank sign is what you're regulating. And let, let the property owner fill in what's on it.
Luke, I, I'm probably going backwards with this now, but we're, we're talking about two different, and we're talking about regulating signs on somebody's property.
Mm-hmm.
As well as we as a group are also looking at what we're doing as far as signs in a right-of-way.
Correct.
I, I, I'm losing track of the distinction there as far as what we can or can't regulate.
Bottom line is, bottom line is you can't regulate what is said on the sign. Let's put it this way and another way, and the very last bullet point is what I want to get at. Basically, if you want to go down the road, and my understanding of the Supreme Court decision is, if you want to allow some signs in the right-of-way, that's fine, but you're allowing signs in the right-of-way. You're not allowing this type of sign or that type of sign. And if you put it in, in the manner in which you are, and frankly, I, I see an exemption in there now that, that you either, you want to address already, that you either want to take it out or specify more about the size and time, placement, and manner. The point is, it becomes a toehold, is what it amounts to, is that it's, it's going to be difficult. And, and based on what I had read from the letter that was submitted to the, to the city council, as well as the information I've seen in other trade magazines and heard out of other places, basically if, if you write a regulation that allows a temporary sign in the right-of-way for one purpose, you could just as well write it to allow it for all other purposes.
But really, isn't it safe to say that the right-of-way is really kind of a, it's a secondary issue? That's just the placement, where we want it to place.
Bingo. Yeah.
It isn't, whether it's on their property or in the right-of-way, the restrictions or the allowances, whatever you want to talk, call it, are the same?
Yes.
Okay. So it really, content is out. It's, do you want, do you want signs in the right-of-way or not? That's a whole separate issue from the balance of what you're referring to.
Well, the whole, right. What you're, what you're dealing with and what you've got coming before you today is going to be a question of placing a type of sign in the right-of-way. And the point that I'm making to you is differentiating between what type of sign is allowed in the right-of-way is what the problem is. The decision of whether or not signs should be allowed in the right-of-way, that's a community decision. That's a city council decision. The settled case law is that you're not differentiating between who gets to put that sign out there. And so even though the way it's written does, that's not what's happening in that case. And it, I'm reading between the lines, I'm expecting that you'd probably be tested eventually on that.
So is it safe to say that if we make an exemption for a particular type of sign based on what it says on the sign, i.e. Realtor sign versus not Realtor sign, and someone that wanted to put a not Realtor sign, did so in the right-of-way and we plucked it out, and they came back to us, we would be defenseless because we, we can't regulate signs based upon what, what they say on them?
That's my understanding.
So we, we can allow signs in the right-of-way. We'll specify where in the right-of-way, how long, what size, but we cannot regulate what the sign says on it because we have free speech in this country. And that would be regulating free speech. If we say, you cannot say contractor, you who may only say Realtor. That's discrimination. So that's not constitutional. We, we can't look at the sign and read it to decide whether it's legal or not. We have to be able to tell if it's legal or not based on where it is, when it is, how long it's been there, that sort of thing. That's what this Reed versus Gilbert case established. The church wanted to put a sign, but it wasn't a Realtor sign. So the city said, no, church, you can't put your sign there. You're not a Realtor sign, or you're not a, whatever they do allow. And the church sued the city and won. So that precedent is set. That's a Supreme Court case. And for someone to challenge us, if we allow an exemption based on the message, we're going to have a hard time justifying it. We will lose.
Yeah, I guess I, as far as the closing of my, my statements is it's a long winding road to get to the, get to the point of where, where it's at with, with the question that I know you're, you're faced with here. And that, that the problem is not necessarily with allowing them in the right-of-way or not. That's, that's a sign in the right-of-way. That's not an issue. It's, it's, it's about differentiating between this type of speech versus that type of speech.
Right.
And without going through this whole ordeal of this case, you really don't get to that point.
So we should, if we're inclined to allow signs in the right-of-way for anyone, we should be allowing them for everyone?
That's correct.
Do we have any questions for Luke?
So if the right-of-way sign, Luke, is in there, you can have a, you can designate one sign in a right-of-way, you just can't designate what it says?
That's right. Basically, I, I mean, the way that I would see it going down is, is that you would wind up having those types of periods, those periods where you can have a sign on the property. And then at that point, you would just, you would extend that out to where on the right-of-way you would allow it. I mean, that's probably the, the simplest way that you would extend that out is that on the property, in this case, I can have, I can have a sign while my property's for sale. And that I can also, there's a process to allow it out in the right-of-way as well. That's likely the simplest way.
So we-
One sign, name it.
So I don't care where it goes. We're not there yet. But let's just use real estate signs as an example, because those can go up for days or many, many months. So we can have language as it relates to Realtor signs that says, as long as the property's for sale, it's allowable instead of a set day or number of days?
You could do, you could do both. You could, while, while the property is for sale. But keep in mind, I mean, the thing that I'll say again, I'm devil's advocate, is my job. My property's always for sale, but I've never listed it. Someone gives me enough money, I'll sell it. And so I can see someone arguing that. So I mean, we, we've got to be creative when we write our ordinances. But you get my point.
You would have to have a contractor or some type of thing.
I agree with you though.
So now what about a political sign?
At that point, you're going to regulate based on when you allow elections, when you allow election signs up.
So election signs would be purely during an election cycle?
Yeah. So instead of saying an election sign would go up, you would wind up saying that signs are allowed this far in advance of an election and this many days after.
And it might be-
Or you could put a political sign up while your house is for sale.
Yes, you could.
Because it doesn't regulate the content.
Yes, you could.
And you can have one sign, or you can have three signs on your property while your house is for sale, or, and when there's an election. Or, and while your house is under construction.
Yeah. Because it wouldn't, it wouldn't specify what it's going to say on it. And it's, I mean, obviously, if you're trying to sell your, your house and you're having an elec, two election signs up, you're kind of bugging your nose despite your face. But in the same breath, that might be, that might be what they want to do. And it's not for us to say.
We can also limit the quantity, right?
Correct.
So you would only allow, be allowed one sign?
I mean, and yeah, as, as both you are saying, and you could also point out that in no case shall there be more than blank signs on a property.
Excuse me, are we then regulating their free speech as well? If we say that they can have two signs, what if it's an election cycle and they're Republican and they've got, you know, the governor, the lieutenant governor, any of the, any of the Senate plus localized as well? I mean, we're telling them if we have three signs or two signs, you got to pick a, pick a person and put on there?
No, they, we're not regulating what they put on it. It'd just be a number. Time, placement, manner, manner, manner is going to be, manner is going to include how many that you can allow on there too. It is, it's, but you could also have vote, fill in the blank party as well, which you cover. But it-
I, I'm just saying, if we're going to start limiting how many signs they put on, really you have to limit all of their signs that they put on.
Right. If you have three and you normally have a for sale and a garage sale, and your house is under construction, and then there's an election, where you're going to have to give up one of those, give up your for-sale sign to put a political sign. Doesn't matter what the sign says. You can have three signs, or you can have one sign. Whatever we decide goes, doesn't matter what the content is. You can have five signs. Doesn't matter if they're identical or different or-
That is what brought up this conversation though, isn't it? As Mike went around and saw there was clutter all over, which we probably all knew. There were seven signs that said-
The, the reason this came up is because when I took office, I said, I don't like favoritism and I don't like excess regulations. We should not have rules. We don't intend to enforce. We enforce our regulations. So I directed staff to enforce the regulations when I became mayor. And our regulations do not permit signs of any type in the right-of-way. So we started enforcing that and Realtors have been, it hasn't been written in our ordinance that Realtor signs were allowed in the right-of-way. We just have not enforced that. And that's favoritism, because we have enforced other signs not being allowed to be put in the right-of-way. And I don't have anything against Realtors at all. I really don't. I'm, it's, to me, it's a matter of fairness. And if, if we don't have the stomach to enforce no signs in the right-of-way, then let's change our ordinance and allow signs in the right-of-way. But let's do it in such a way that we won't be sued. We can't be discriminating against what the sign says. So if we want to have signs in the right-of-way, how many, where, what size, what time period? Those are things we can regulate legally. What the sign says on it, none of our beeswax. Unless it's obscene, then we can regulate that. But in fairness to everyone who might want to put a sign in the right-of-way, we either allow them or we don't uniformly for everyone. Everyone gets the same rules. And if, if this appears to be unenforceable, then we can, we won't know that until we try to enforce it. I don't think it's unenforceable. I think not allowing any signs in the right-of-way is entirely enforceable. And many communities do it. Whether we do it or not is up to the council. I do not want to tell my staff to ignore certain signs for certain people and enforce on others, which is what we were doing. That's not fair. Everybody should have the same rules. And so it's less important to me what you decide, as long as it's uniformly applied across our community to everyone fairly and evenly. And for years, I've heard about court cases. I just, I didn't realize it was the Supreme Court. That's a pretty clear precedent. And I don't think it's a coincidence that when we published on an agenda that we were considering a sign code change that every- change, that every member of council got a packet from a lawyer telling us about sign code regulations and, um, how we should write them. There are opportunities out there that could prey upon a city who unknowingly does something and then gets sued. So, I wanna protect the city. We should do things correctly in accordance with our laws.
I would assume we can have different regulations for residential property versus commercial, industrial.
That's correct. Based on your zoning district, you can regulate.
So we could allow them in the right of way in a residential, but we could not allow them in the right of way in a commercial?
As long as it's uniform.
Any other questions for Luke?
Luke, when we were meeting a few months ago, um, part of the conversation, we went through a lot of this at the time about the Gilbert decision. And towards the end of that, or, or some meetings later, it was brought up that that decision was in question. Is this the end result of that? That you're referring to here, or is it still in question and being looked at?
Okay, the settled case law was in reference to the temporary signs. The portion that was in question was with regards to off-premise, on-premise. Is in billboards.
So that's the one that's stills in question at this point?
Correct. And it was a road that I, we could spend another two hours talking about if we really wanted to. But yeah, that, that part was left open, and that's frankly why I purposefully didn't make mention of it at all in here.
Because that, that does kinda overlap into this issue. If you allow signs, and the question of on-premise, off-premises comes into play, then you are regulating content versus that, and what you're saying is we can't.
The question of off-premise, on-premise does creep into the, the question that's out there remaining on off-premise, on premises that the reference was with who is making the message. You can't do it based on who's making the message, and then that's where the gray area was, was that there is some, some inclination that in some cases, you could argue that, that on-premise, off-premise could be involved. But again, um, with regard to temporary signs, that was not something that was, that was, the door wasn't left open on temporary signs of that nature. And so, what they're saying is they weren't, they weren't sure if they were gonna apply the strict scrutiny to, to billboards, but they knew they would on these temporary signs. That's what, that's what I got out of it. Yeah, that's to be determined on the larger signs, but that's not this case, no.
Luke, Shane, I'm over here.
There you are.
Um, just kind of clarifying, part of our discussion when we went through the sign ordinance and all that, the primary thing is, is we didn't really get any more restrictive on how many signs out, right? So right now, you could have your house for sale. You could have a roofer sign in your yard if you're roofing. You'd have ten political signs out there. Right now, our only restriction is that those be on private property and not in the right of way, correct?
Correct.
So we're not very restrictive, we're just restricting it from right of way.
Right now, right now, the ordinance lists the exemptions to when you need a, when you need a permit on them. There's seventeen of them with three subpoints into there on a couple of them. The point is, yeah, we're, we're restricting, we are, we're calling them the contractor signs, we're calling them the real estate signs, but we're not, they're not listed as allowed in the, in the right of way, and that's ultimately, uh, the way that this ordinance is written. There is a provision that would allow one type of sign in the right of way. But not the others.
You mean the proposed?
Correct, the proposed ordinance.
Right now, currently, no, signs are not allowed in the public right of way. What the council will be considering is an exemption to allow one type of sign based upon the message to be in the right of way, which I feel is a dangerous step to take because of the Supreme Court ruling that you can't regulate based on the message. So if we are inclined to allow signs in the right of way, we should be allowing any kind of sign in the right of way. And regulate how many, how long, what size. Right, we, we shouldn't be restricting the free speech by looking at what the sign says on it to determine whether or not it can be there.
Vince, I'm gonna direct this question your way. I'll probably ask the same question again when we discuss this at the council meeting, 'cause I asked the same question two weeks ago. Okay, at the planning commission, the planning commission did not vote to grant the exemption for the real estate signs. Is that correct? Okay, so, so, so tonight, when we vote on that, if we want to overturn that, we will need a two-thirds vote of this body to overturn that decisions. We would need seven, seven votes to overturn the planning commission decision.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Luke.
Thank you, thanks, Luke.
Kind of a difficult topic, but I appreciate the explanation. And with that, I think we will, okay, are there any future agenda items? I'll ask that next. Buddy?
Mayor, I do have a couple. Can I just make a comment first, and I think this is important? I've gotten emails, I've gotten phone calls, I've had, I've talked to people back to the sign ordinance thing. Um, where people have come and said, don't you have more important things to do for our city than this? And I think what's important, and I, I agree with you Sarah wholeheartedly, um, that if we're gonna have ordinances, let's have them be what we are willing to enforce, otherwise we should change them and get rid of them. And I agree with that. And so, I've tried to explain to people that this is not something that we as a council have just woke up and said, we should do this. This is something that we have considered based on a request to us by the Realtors. Is that fair? Pretty much.
Yes, but I think it arises out of my direction to staff to enforce the ordinances that are on the books.
Absolutely, but, but from that then came the, the request. And I think we have an obligation at times to take a look at requests from the public, and this is gonna lead into a, a work session topic. So I just think it's important for the public to know that's out there, that, you know, these ten people over Thanksgiving just didn't decide to open up and determine that we should have real estate signs. It's something that was brought to us, it was, has been under consideration. And I think we have an obligation to take a look at, at many of those things that are brought to us from the public standpoint, as it relates to our ordinances. But the question came up then, and it's on another topic, is we, we're being asked to take a look at, at ordinance language. And, um, Vince and, and I'm not sure who else, Don, I believe, uh, had a little bit of a email conversation back forth regarding what is the process for somebody from the public requesting a change to an ordinance? And I don't know if we really knew if we had one, per se. Um, it would be very difficult for everybody that doesn't like something to come in and say, I want an ordinance changed and have it looked at. That would be difficult. But I don't know if there is a process for the public's, a defined process for getting that public input and consideration of an ordinance change. So if there isn't something, I think we should come up with some manner that is defined in how that works.
Sure. I'm, I'm not opposed to that. I think, um, we do have, some of our ordinances are more explicit than others about how amendments can be made. For instance, Title 21, which is our zoning ordinance, is very clear how a change, the sign code is part of the ordinance. Um, part of the zoning ordinance. And the plan commission can initiate a change, the city council can initiate a change. A citizen cannot initiate a change to the zoning ordinance, however, a citizen can bend a councilperson's ear, and a councilperson can initiate a change. And that's what happened here. So this came through the council.
Right, and, and I'm just saying, I, I think we should have, we should have a documented manner in which it can be done. So, in the future, we as council members, um, as mayors, as staff, we know what the process is if somebody's requesting something.
Sure. Anything else? Okay, then, I think we will go ahead and adjourn and, um, reconvene at seven o'clock for the city council meeting.